Thank you so much, and I so appreciate everyone being here and your commitment to really advance nursing in Kentucky. I am Kristin Ashford, I'm a co-chair with April, who really is the lead with the Government Affairs Cabinet. I'm currently serving as Dean of Nursing at Frontier Nursing University in the Commonwealth, which I would just like to do a shout out. It has largest area for providing nurse practitioner education in the nation. So we have a gem here in the Commonwealth that can really impact communities in the Commonwealth. So we're here to serve you, to help support you in any way. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Kristin. So I'm going to go over our format for tonight. We will be able to give our legislators a little bit of extra time since we have the two superstars on. We will review our KNA 2025-2026 priorities, so you'll know what we're going to be focusing on this fiscal year. When you are asked questions, because we are going to provide you with some tough questions, you'll get probably two to five minutes to answer those questions. And then we hope that our attendees will ask questions too. And then they can put those in the Q and A box. And then I will moderate those. I normally tell people that I'm the timekeeper, but we are going to have enough time that I don't think I'm going to have to be the timekeeper. But I'm going to go ahead and give those instructions anyway, just in case something happens and we get a whole flood of legislators who show up. So the, the way this works is when I give you the high sign, this means you have one minute left. And then after that minute is over, I will thank you for your answer. Thank you. Okay. So at this time, I'm going to introduce April, who is going to talk about the 2025-2026 priorities for the Kentucky Nurses Association.
Thank you, Delinor. So again, I just want to echo the thanks that you all are coming and spending part of your afternoon with us. We really appreciate you spending that time with us. We're excited, again, and very appreciative. We hope that this is helpful for you as well as the KNA members that are here today. It looks that we have about 40 members on. I'm sure you know that there are nurses in every legislative district within the state and some of your constituents might be on tonight. And they're looking forward to hearing from you guys and what you all have to say. Each year, the Kentucky Nurses Association works to improve not only nursing, but overall healthcare. My goal is for nurses to be seen as healthcare policy experts. We do this not only by volunteering workforce data collection, the Nurse Emeritus Program, collaborating with other healthcare and professional associations, and setting forth legislative priorities for the General Assembly. These legislative priorities and overall Kentucky Nurse Association enterprise priorities are based upon information review and sharing, evidence-based practice, review of resources, and research-based policy. These priorities are brought forth to our attention, not only by those things I just mentioned, but any individual, whether it be a nurse, a legislator, or a private citizen. Year-round, the KNA accepts requests for proposals for any priority or concerns that the individual can bring forth. You can submit those forms on the KNA website. It can be found under the advocacy link on our website. So in 2023, the General Assembly passed House Bill 176, strengthening both workplace violence and safety. This data shows it's very important, but we need to do more. Forty-eight percent of nurses report an increase in workplace violence and over half of those nurses report an injury from that direct violation. While we applaud the legislators for passing that bill, we still have a lot of work to do. And we look forward to working with you guys to move forward further legislation in this upcoming assembly. As you know, Kentucky nurses, as well as the entire United States, has a critical nursing shortage and approximately 36% of the workforce shortages nurses. KNA wants to continue to partner with the General Assembly to implement creative strategies to address these shortages. At this time, we have four initiatives or priorities moving forth. First, as previously mentioned, workplace safety. Second is the nurse, school nurse program. And third is the Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner. You'll hear us refer to that as the SANE program or SANE nurses. And last is just overall healthcare workforce shortage within the Commonwealth. Please know you guys will get additional information in the near future on these priorities. KNA supports a number of other issues dealing with recruitment and retention, the Nurse Emeritus Program, making the workplace safer and less stressful, and measures that would make nurses more appealing and those wanting to enter the field. We not only worked with legislators on our priorities, but other provider associations and groups to collaborate on solutions to these things. Now, we'd like to give you guys an opportunity to share your important issues with the Kentucky nurses. Our lobbyist Julie Denton and I will take turns going back and forth, asking questions. You all will have two to three minutes. Again, that's not as important tonight because there's only two of you guys that join us tonight. But if you need any clarifications, just let us know and we will repeat the question. Julie, would you like to start out on the first question? Are you with us?
Sure.
Perfect.
The first question is dealing with the healthcare workers who face some of the highest rates of workplace violence of any profession, which threatens both the workforce retention and patient safety. Would you support legislation to improve workplace safety for nurses, healthcare workers, and patients that include the following provisions? And you guys have gotten these, I've sent these to you. The first one is requiring healthcare employees to promptly report active place violence to their supervisor in addition to following their facilities, policies, and procedures. The second is requiring facilities to report in the aggregate their workplace violence data to the Cabinet for Health and Family Services for trending purposes. This information would be protected, so it couldn't be discoverable, subject to subpoena, or admissible in legal proceedings. We do not, I repeat, do not want to facilitate or encourage lawsuits. And the third is requiring facilities to post signs in conspicuous areas stating that employees must report active violence to the supervisor and are encouraged to report violence to law enforcement. That way, when folks come into these facilities, they're aware that if they commit some act of violence against someone working in the facility, that that person must report it, and it may also be reported to law enforcement. I'm just going to go alphabetically. Jared, you, you won that short straw.
Yeah, thank you, Julie, for the opportunity. And thank all of you for having us tonight. I deeply appreciate being with the whole team here and talking through some of these issues and learning about what's most important to you guys. I can tell you, after listening to April and her intro there and understanding that 48% of nurses have experienced workplace violence and most of those folks have suffered injuries, I can tell you, I not only agree with those priorities you laid out, I think that we need to do far more to prevent workplace violence against nurses. And I just, I'm still a little bit shocked that that number is 48%. I would not have expected it to be anywhere near that. So promptly reporting, you know, I would think that we don't need KRS for that. I would think maybe we should, we could handle that with, with internal policy. I don't know, I'll need to learn more. But, you know, as far as the, the aggregate data and posting signs, I would absolutely support that. But I do believe we can do far more to, to keep our, our healthcare workers safe, specifically nurses and their places of employment. So that's what I really want to look at, is more prevention to support you guys than, than reporting. But certainly would, would support all of the, the reporting mechanisms that you mentioned.
Great, and Representative Nemus?
Thank you, Julie.
He's sponsoring the bill on this, so he better support it.
That's right, yeah, I'm kind of for it. Yeah, so before I, before I respond, and I will respond directly and say a little bit more, I wanted to say that I hope everybody on the call understands how well you guys are represented in Frankfurt. Obviously, April is somebody who all of us know, Republican, Democrat, House and the Senate, somebody who we all respect and have a great deal of belief in and trust in when she says something. So you guys are well represented internally.
You're very captive.
Well, I, I don't say things I don't, I don't mean, so I mean it. And also externally, you have obviously Julie Denton, who's both, both April and Julie are on the call. Julie's your external Legislative Affairs person. We, we trust her, I think the world of her, I've known her for a long time. And, you know, and her being a former legislator lets all of us know, both parties know, that, you know, she gets it, she understands the kinds of pressures that we have and, and so forth. And she also understands how it works internally to, to help us get things done as well. So I want to, want to make sure everybody on the call knows how well represented you are in Frankfurt. Your interests are taken care of. So with regard to this issue, obviously, House Bill 176 in 2023 was a bill that we got passed. It, it was good insofar as it went. It didn't go as far as we thought it was going to. And we, and so we need to take another, another step at it and amend it and improve it. The Kentucky Hospital Association, who I have a great deal, great deal of respect for, opposed us then, and they'll soon oppose us next time. We're going to try to work with them and, and, and remove the, we got to get this done. And I'm committed to getting that, getting it, getting it passed the, to the General Assembly this year, with or without them, but hopefully with them, because they're our friends and we want them to, to come to the table and, and protect their, their employees, their nurses as well. And so anyway, I think it's a, it's a good bill, it's a good start. As Jared said, we have to do a lot more, but it is a, it's, it's an essential component of the, of the process. I am a lawyer, and so I understand the thought that this kinds of information might lead to or help a plaintiff in a lawsuit against a facility or professionals. And obviously, that's not what we're interested in doing. And so we'll try to, we will protect that information. But information's necessary so we can make good policy judgments on, on what to do. And in order to make good policy judgments, you have to know the facts on the ground. So I feel good about it. It was, I was, I was blessed enough for you guys to ask me to, to run the, the bill in 2023, and I'm honored to, to do it this next year as well. And you have my full, full support, of course.
April, I'm going to ask you to make a comment about how we are trying to build a coalition. Would you address that just briefly?
Yes, ma'am. So we sent out any, an email to any and all professional healthcare associations that we could think of. We had over 20 emails that we sent out requesting an initial meeting where we had a really good turnout. We spoke very vaguely about things that individuals wanted to see within this bill. We took that information from the first meeting back to Representative Nemus, who met with the bill drafter. And from what we collected and data from that initial meeting, we drafted a bill. Once we have gotten the bill in its finality, we will go back to those associations. We've had two meetings thus far. We'll go back to those associations and we will gain, hopefully, support from those individuals that have requested the data that we've put in place. So we have reached out to, like I said, 20-plus individual associations within our state.
Thank you, April.
So our next question, Kentucky has a shortage of sexual assault nurse examiners, or what you will hear for us referred to as SANEs. These exams, which also collect critical forensic evidence for prosecution, can take two to six hours to complete. The shortage that leads to exam delays ties up ER docs that has to step in when there's no SANE nurse available and can force victims to travel several hours away from home from their original hospital that they presented to, creates a serious transportation and follow-up issue, and some individuals choose not to go. Would you all support legislation to increase the number of SANEs in Kentucky? Furthering, would you also support funding that would address this shortage? Representative Bowman, would you like to start? Because I'm following the alphabetical.
I was going to let Luke go first on this one.
I like, I like this process.
I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's quite all right. No, I certainly, I certainly support, you know, having, having enough capacity to serve all the needs of victims across the, our great Commonwealth. So as it relates to a, a direct appropriation for this, you know, I would have to learn more about it and understand it a little bit better and would certainly lean on you guys to, to help inform me and educate me. That's, that's part of why I'm here tonight, to, to be educated. I understand that the, the healthcare space is a, a little bit of a gap for me personally as a legislator. It's just not something I have a lot of experience with professionally, privately. And so, so I'm learning, and I will continue to do so as it relates to this issue. Certainly support anything we can do to provide more capacity for these victims, and we'll learn more about, about funding it.
Sure. Out of curiosity, what's your background?
I work in specialty chemicals for Berkshire Hathaway. And I manage operational excellence and manufacturing for our global operations. We have 54 specialty chemical facilities around the world.
Okay, wonderful.
In Cleveland, Iowa, actually, right now in a, in a poorly lit hotel room. On, on a little business trip here.
Nice. Well, we appreciate your time and being here with us tonight.
Yeah, it's my pleasure.
Representative Nemus?
Yeah, so I don't know if we need legislation. If we do, I'm certainly open to it. I think what we need is funding. We have the money, we need to get it done. I, I would, you know, put a challenge to the, the, to you guys, your organization. And that is that, I don't, I don't know the, the number. What's the number, what's the appropriation number we need? You know, we've, we've had a lot of funding issues that we've, a lot of funding of programs and, and so forth that we've done the last couple of years. I think we'll have that kind of money again this year. So we need to strike right now. But the, but we have to have the number. I mean, and so that's, it has to be proven up, you know, how many do we need? Where are they going to go? What is the, what's the price so we can make a, make an appropriation? So the answer is yes, I'm for legislation if needed. I don't think that's needed, though. I think what's needed is just funding. But whatever, whatever we need to do, and the most, not the most important thing. Another important thing with respect to SANE nurses is if we, the, the longer there is a delay, the more likely, in some circumstances, not all, but in some circumstances, that the perpetrator is out and about and we're not taking care of business and protecting the rest of our society. And so it's certainly good for victims to get it done quickly. But it's also done, it's also important to reduce the potential of future victims. We need to get the perpetrators as quick as we can. So it's all around, yes, for me, we do need to know, you know, put some meat on the bones and know exactly what the request is, what's the appropriations needed.
So I'm going to tail on to your responses. I absolutely agree, data collection is part of the process, and we are struggling with data collection. So I'm going to ask you all, what can we do for data collection? How can we gain data throughout the state to help put a number to what we're asking?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know if you talk with the cabinet or with the Attorney General, which, or maybe both, to determine, to determine what the need is. And then once we know the need, whether it's, you know, one or 100, of course, it's not one. But whatever the number is, we can figure out estimated costs from there. And so I, I guess we need to, we need to figure out what the need is. The cabinet is probably the best place to get that information from and then, and then move from there. Kim Moser is, is obviously, I've spoken with her about SANE nurses for a number, a long time, and she's, she's interested. So she might have better answers to how do we get the exact request, you know, the parameters to build a request around?
Okay, that's a good place to start, thank you.
I have received some, Kristin, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I was just going to just quickly interject, because I really think that builds upon the bills and the legislation that was passed related to maternal morbidity mortality, having Kentucky one of the highest states for the morbidity mortality for women. And substance use and violence are some of the highest impactors related to those areas. And so I think that would actually be a great idea to, to partner and talk with the cabinet and Representative Moser regarding this issue. I also wanted to ask Delinor and April and Julie, how do, would you like to address some of the, the responses in the chat?
Well, I'm going to respond to those in just a little bit, if that's okay, Kristin. Okay, I was trying to give some of the other legislators time to get in so that we could have a more robust discussion. However, I am going to start with the first question, and it relates to workplace violence. And it says, what happens to the data of workplace violence once compiled? What are legislators going to do to work with organizations to protect us? And I'm going to give that to Jason Nemus first.
Yes, so let's get to information. I'm assuming we, we kind of know what a lot of it will say, which is that it's a dangerous place. And so we need to figure out what, is it, is it a, is it a criminal justice response? Or is it a more protective response? The, the first thing to be at the facility, they need to, you know, protect their workers. And if they need help from the state, then we'll figure out exactly what that is. So Del, I, I don't know the answer on what the state will do if, if it's a criminal justice response or something else. I'd like to hear more of what, what you guys think and obviously what the facilities think. But it's important to know, you know, what we're, what we're talking about here exactly.
Representative Bowman, do you have a response?
Yeah, I, I think, I, I would want to understand it a little bit better. And this is, this is data that's compelled to, to be pulled forward to the legislature. This is, this is what we're discussing. We've already, we've already.
There would be a report to LRC every year that would show the aggregate information. And this would allow you all to see what kind of trends, what kind of violence, you know? Are people being shot, are they being stabbed, are they, you know? What's going on in the facilities so that you can better understand? And KHA can understand the trends. Of course, you know, no facility wants to say they're, they're having any issues in their facilities, but it just happens. And it's not, you know, it, stuff happens because these can be highly emotional situations, especially in the ERs, but that doesn't mean it's okay. So we do need to combat that. So I do think that once this is, you know, you get your baseline information the first year, and then after that, you can see what the trends are. We're trying to make sure we're protecting those facilities so that they're not subject to lawsuits because of the information or that lawsuits that are filed can't access it to use it within their lawsuit. That's not the purpose at all, but the purpose is to see what's going on. And this would not be reported to, to the General Assembly by facility. It would also be aggregate information.
Yeah, I would absolutely support that and allow for informed decision-making for the General Assembly. Let us understand where we need to apply resources, where we need to apply stronger policy perhaps in other areas. So absolutely, I would support that and be a champion for that, absolutely.
Right. Would you all, would legislators like to hear about personal stories of nurses that have been a victim of workplace violence? Is that something that's impactful?
100%, 100%. Or at least I'll speak for myself, I would want to, to experience that 100%, absolutely.
That's another thing that KNA is doing. We are compiling a group of individuals that can testify in committee that can speak to something that's happened to them personally.
Yeah, those, you're very, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jason.
Go ahead, no, go ahead, Jared.
I was just saying, those, I, I've now been in the General Assembly a few years, and those stories are always very compelling and moving for folks on, on our committees and the public at large. I think they need to understand what's happening with, with nurses around our state and get serious about acting on it.
And this is important just because of the retention issue, because if you're afraid to go to work or you, and the reason we're addressing this legislatively is because, not all, but there are some places where healthcare workers work and there is the environment to kind of tamp down on this and let's act like it's not a problem. And so we need, we need places where healthcare workers are to embrace that this stuff happens and we just need to address it. So we're not trying to point fingers or make anybody the bad guy. We just want to partner with everybody so that everybody's safe. And, you know, nobody should go to work and be afraid.
That's right.
My brother, my brother works in an ER, and he's a big guy. And he's mean, and he's nasty, and I can say that because I'm his sister. But he's the ER bouncer because he's the big guy. And so the nurses, the doctors, everybody, he's a nurse, but everybody sends him in to deal with the problematic patients because they know he'll handle them, he's not going to take any crap, and he'll put them in their place. And he shouldn't have to do that, but I think he kind of likes that part of the job, to be honest with you.
I, I would just like to make a point that while we think about hospitals as the place where violence occurs, it occurs in any place where nurses work, whether it's in a classroom or a school, school nurses are attacked, long-term care, home care, hospice. We need to start thinking about it in a broader perspective. And that is wherever nurses work, violence is occurring. And we need to ensure that there's a safe environment for them. At this point, we just had someone to join us, Representative Heron. Thank you very much for being able to join us. Will you introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we'll continue on?
Absolutely, thank you all. I am State Senator Katora Heron, and I represent the 35th Senate District. And so thank you all for inviting us here. There was some misunderstanding on my schedule, so I'm glad that I got the, the email. So whoever sent that email, thank you. But, you know, I, I care deeply about healthcare in all levels. And most of the work that I have done has been with youth and families. And so my perspective or lens around healthcare and nurses is really in the juvenile justice space, mental health space, foster care. And so we do know that, we know we have our nurses who are dealing with young people as it relates to mental health, but then also that health of patient care. And so I'm, I'm glad to join and look forward to getting involved in the conversation.
Thank you very much.
Delinor, if I could go back to previous question real quickly?
Yes, Jason.
Okay, first of all, I like the way you introduced Senator Heron better because we liked it when she was a representative more than a senator. We still love her.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I apologize to you, Senator Heron. I apologize.
But we still love her.
Please forgive me, I don't want to get on the bad list.
No, there's, yeah. So anyway, so the point I wanted to make was with respect to the facilities, we don't want to point at anybody and make them look bad, no doubt about that. Okay, fine, unless they need to be, right? So if there's a facility that's doing very, very poorly, or a facility that's doing very, very well, we want to identify them, at least to learn, you know? You, you need to do it better, and here's, here's the things that maybe you're not doing so well. Or if there's a facility doing it great, let's figure out what they're doing. I mean, that's kind of the point to spread best practices. The other point I wanted to make was, I think, in April's comment about, I think it was April who said, or asked the question, do you want individual stories? And so that, that led me to this thought, and that is this. You nurses need to understand how much of a respect you have in the legislature, hopefully in society, no doubt. And so when you come in, come in with confidence and, you know, tell us the stories that you think we need to know. Almost every legislator is going to, not that they disrespect anybody else, don't hear me say that, but they're going to sit a little bit up, a little bit more up maybe and listen because we have such a great deal of respect for nurses. So go in there and tell your stories, you know, you're the expert in the area. And, and I think it has a, I think it will have a lot of cachet.
Thank you. Okay, Julie, you want to take our next question?
Sure. When schools have a nurse on site all day, every day, the student absenteeism decreases as well as the staff absences decline. The children learn better, their health improves, and parents miss less work. A national cost study found, cost benefit study found that a dollar invested in school nurses yields $2.20 in savings through healthcare, parent productivity, and teacher time. And in Massachusetts, they reported that school nurses saved the state $20 million annually, mostly from avoiding emergency room visits and reduction in parent work acts, absences. So the employers are reporting that when there's school nurses on, in each school, the parents aren't having to leave in the middle of the day to go get their child and take them to the doctor or take them home or whatever. And so it, it's not just within the education system that the, the savings are seen. So we know that not every school in Kentucky has a nurse. In Jefferson County, we're fortunate that every school does have their own nurse all day, every day. And some districts have that, but not every district does. And so we are looking to have an appropriation that the, that there would be this bucket of money pretty much divided between the two years of the biennium that school districts who wanted to participate would be able to come in and use those dollars to get up and ran, running and to have a school nurse. And under Governor
And under Rep, uh, Governor Bevin. He was able to change it in Kentucky so that our schools can be. For all intents and purposes, Medicaid providers, so they can bill for those services that they're providing to those kids and that helps offset the cost. Of hiring the nurses. So we would like to find out if you guys would support. An appropriation of up to ten million over the biennium to help. Schools cover or districts cover the cost of having a school or a nurse in each of their schools. And we'll start with Senator Heron. Since you're new, we'll just throw you to the wolves.
No, no, it's fine. Thank, thank you for that. Um, we just had last month, um, in one of our committees, I think it was, um. Health Services. Sorry, my phone is ringing.
Was it Mead County?
Yeah, yes.
It's Mead County. It was great.
So Mead County just came and presented and talked about. Um, their program that they have and they partnered with one of the, the local. Uh, medical providers, um, in that county. So I was very impressed with that. Um, and just hearing the numbers. And I think that it makes sense that if you have a nurse on site. That students are not going to call their parents and their parents are going to come get them, that they can be seen. Obviously, we have to make sure. That those parents give permission for those kids to be seen. I know that someone brought that up. Um. I don't know enough about, you know, the, the cost and the appropriations. But, you know, for me, it makes sense. And I also think that when we look back to. Uh, what we did several years ago around, um, school safety. I believe that that was one of the, the things that, that people recommended. Not only to have those mental health professionals, but to also have those nurses, uh, that can, that can provide services. And I like the fact that when you think about it, it's not just for the kids, it's for the staff. So when you're talking about. Not having as many substitute teachers or, you know, and all of that, um, I, I think it's a win-win. Um, I don't know enough about the cost benefits, but, um, it is definitely something that I, I would support. Um, and I think that it makes sense.
Great. We appreciate that. And so we're going to give Representative Bowman a break and we're going to go to. The Big Kahuna to, I think you referred to something like that earlier, Representative Nemus.
Yeah, so, um, no doubt. I think it's a great thing. First of all, I want to commend JCPS for doing this. It's not required. And they have, uh, nurse in every school, which is, which is absolutely wonderful. I think if, if you ask teachers, I think they're universally in favor of it. Um, I, with, I don't know the exact number, um, that I would support ten million doesn't sound over. Uh, doesn't sound too much to me, but I do want to make sure. Um, and maybe this is just me protecting my district, but I do want to make sure that. If there is that kind of funding, Jefferson County is going to get its fair share. We shouldn't be harmed. And neither should Shelby or Oldham. We shouldn't be harmed by going ahead and doing it before it's required. I'm reminded. Of the, um, of the situation where it was all-day kindergarten. And we were only funding from the state level, half-day kindergarten, but Jefferson County and many others went ahead and. And funded the rest. And so when we went to all-day kindergarten, we did it in such a way, when we funded it from Frankfurt, we did it in such a way where we. Ensured that Jefferson County wasn't, wasn't harmed in that. So we'd, we'd need a similar program. Uh, to protect our dollars because, um, you know, JCPS has been doing right, even though it's not required. So with that caveat, I. I would, I would support, um, going, uh, funding, uh, he- helping to fund the, the nurses in every school statewide.
Right.
At the very least on every school campus. Cause I know there's some, you know, in Oldham County, for example, I have. Four schools on one campus and maybe they don't need one per school per se, but they certainly need. Oldham County has it, but I'm talking about other, other places.
Right. And the speaker has mentioned that previously to me. Um, and while it's not ideal, it would be better, but. The ideal is so that you don't have kindergartners walking across the campus and. And, and the high schoolers actually go to the nurse or they going to Dunkin' Donuts? Not that I ever did that, but I'm just saying it could happen. Representative Bowman?
Uh, yeah, you, you framed it up really well. And so you had me add to improve education performance because I think this is a significant issue in our state today. Um, and, and our performance is, is suboptimal. I'll just leave it there. And if, if you can clearly demonstrate that. This type of initiative is going to improve education performance across our state. It's also going to be a net positive on the pocketbook. As you mentioned, the savings associated with having these nurses in our schools full-time. Um, yeah, I'd be all in on that. So I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Great, thank you. April?
Well, April, before you start on the next questions, I thought I might ask a couple of questions that are in the Q and A. Um, I have a comment here. Um, as an emergency trauma nurse, I have a lot of training. But our Sane Training is not the standard of the Sane RN. It is the bedside ED nurse who do the exam when the Sane RN is not available. I will say that the vast majority of the time it is us, uncertified, that are doing the exam. Would, um, a program such as a mobile Sane Nurse be considered as a possibility? Um, I can tell you that, uh, I think the Kentucky Hospital Association previously had supported. A, um, mobile Sane, uh, van. However, they lost their funding. So the question is, would you all support something like that, like a mobile Sane? Um, van or, uh, access to a mobile Sane?
Obviously that would come with an appropriation.
Of course.
Yeah.
But would you support it?
Figure out the dollars that would be needed. And yeah, I think that's a good idea. Um, I don't know if that would help Lowell or not. But, uh, but I'd, I'd certainly think it's, it's a something we ought to be doing. It might help Lowell, but I think the facilities in Lowell should have their own.
Yeah, it's, it's a creative solution. I, I, I appreciate it and think that, uh, again, I would support that too. Um, if, if we can just help support one victim or ensure that we get one criminal off the streets, then, uh, you know, I, I. I appreciate and applaud the creative, the creative solution there. So I would, I would support that.
Senator Heron?
Yeah, I mean, I, of course I would, I would support it. You know, I, I have a, a friend who was a Sane Nurse at the U, at U of L Hospital. Um, and she has talked to me about some other, um, issues as it relates to. Um, those nurses and trainings. And so. Um, I, you know, I'm someone who likes to hear like, what are all the issues that, that this population is dealing with and facing? Um, and see what we can do to improve, uh, the overall, um. You know, not only just outcomes, but the overall performances or the things that, that they need in general, just to do their jobs better. Um, so I would be interested in learning more, um, not just on that piece, but what are the other, uh, things that are, have been percolating? Um, around, uh, this specific, uh, nurse.
Thank you. Um, I have another question and this one goes back to workplace safety. Um, are legislators aware of the aspect of workplace safety defined as bullying, verbal abuse and other forms of institutional violence? Addressing this requires assessing hospitals and other healthcare organizations. There will be resistance to changing institutional culture. How do you see yourself supporting nurses in addressing this issue? So shall we start with, did you say the Big Kahuna?
Oh, no.
Okay, Big Kahuna. Go, go for it.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I think this would, this would be. Something that the culture is going to have to be changed from within more than anything else. And so what the nurses and docs and. And the, uh, facility administrators need, I think we would support. Uh, you were in a better position than we are to know how to, how to make those changes, what changes need to be made. So I'm rambling. I'm not trying to. To, um, to skirt the issue, but, uh. I don't, I don't know how we could, you know, what, what's needed, whatever you guys would need to make those. Those changes in culture, we would support, but I think they need to come from within or at least start there.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking in the same vein, kind of like I mentioned earlier with the reporting, that that would need to be an internal type of policy, not a. Not something that we needed to do legislatively, but again, I'm open to learning why we would need to take legislative action on this. Uh, and, and act appropriately based on, and the information that's brought forward.
Yeah, and the only thing, and the only thing that I would add is that we know that there has been, um, a, a big culture shift recently, just in politics. In general. So I think that a lot of institutions and organizations. Uh, are just kind of, uh, feeling just un, uneasy about some of the things, um. Especially with the anti-DI stuff that we've seen across the nation. Um, and just certain languages that people aren't, you know, want to speak about or talk about. And so I do think that. Not just in the hospital field, but in, in all fields, that there are certain people or populations of people. Um, who feel like that they just don't have protections in general as it becomes to, uh, as it relates to harassment and bullying. And I just think in general, as a people, we just have to, uh, talk about and spread just general humanity and kindness. And so I just think that, you know, that is something that we can also just practice in general. Uh, to make sure that we are creating, uh, spaces that is inclusive. Uh, for everyone because as you, as the question said, you know, bullying can come in all different types of ways. And so we just have to, um, support our colleagues. Um, and then also when we see things that should not be happening and occurring, occurring. As, as humans, we should be speaking up and talking about those things. And so I think that sometimes things don't necessarily have to be. Uh, necessarily, uh, a, a policy change or regulations fix. But it's about how are we as adults, as human beings, uh, treating one another?
Thank you, Senator Heron. Okay, April, if you would go to the next question, I'm going to hold this last, um, question I have in the Q and A.
If it's, if it's okay, I would like to loop, uh, Senator Heron back into what we previously spoke about. I just want you to know a little bit about the Kentucky Nurses Association. And our priorities and our legislative priorities and what we view as important things. Um, we have four upcoming and that is workplace safety. The nurses, the Kentucky, um, Sane Nurses, School Nurses and overall workplace. Um, a, a workplace, um, structure in regards to, um, the shortage. Uh, but one interesting statistics, and I'm going to look back to your question and you don't have to interest. Entertain me if you don't want to, but I didn't want you to feel left out because you joined a little late. Um, in twenty twenty-three, the general assembly, they passed House Bill one seventy-six. It strengthened policies, uh, that prevented workplace violence. Data shows that forty-eight percent of nurses reported an increase in workplace violence. And about half of those nurses reported a physical injury from those violence. So moving on to the very first question, I just wanted you to have an opportunity to answer. Um, healthcare work, workers face a highest rate of workplace violence more than any other profession. Which threatens both workforce retention and patient safety. And we just wanted you, uh, to answer the question. Could you support legislation that would improve safety for nurses? Healthcare workers and patients that would include the following provisions. Um, the healthcare workforce employees promptly reporting those acts of violence to their supervisor. Uh, requiring facilities to report aggregate data to the cabinet. It would be non-discoverable, non-suppenable. And, and non-admissible to the court of law. And require facilities to post signs in conspicuous areas stating that employees must report. Those acts of violence to their supervisor and they're encouraged to report those acts to law enforcement. Sorry, that's a whole lot.
Yeah, I mean, it, it sounds like basically it's a reporting, is it a reporting to ensure that you are keeping tabs on like what is happening? I mean, yeah, I, I, I would definitely support it. So I, I worked, my, one of my first jobs out of undergrad was at Maryhurst. And so I have worked inside facility. Obviously, it's a little, it's different than being in a hospital or doctor's office. But working directly with people, um. Unfortunately, especially if it's mental health, sometimes things happen. And so like I understand the need. For that balance, especially if you're talking about folks with severe mental health issues. Um, I know the, the importance of, of hospital staff. Uh, should not be attacked or hurt in the workplace nor any, anybody. Um, and so I, I definitely am on board, um, with, with figuring out, you know, what we can do. Uh, to, uh, to strengthen those protections. Um, but also to ensure that we are, um, not creating barriers for our pipeline of our healthcare. Our hea- healthcare is not going anywhere. There's a lot of industries, you don't know where they're going to go, but we are, we, healthcare is never going to go anywhere. And I, and I think that, you know, it is up to us to make sure that we are creating a pipeline and encouraging people to get into the healthcare system. Not only to help take care of our aging population that we're about to have. Um, but also to, to create that general rational wealth for some individuals, like the healthcare industry. Uh, is, is, is important for several different reasons. So, um, I'm completely on board with, with supporting that. And I will say this as a caveat, um, I typically am not, uh, for more penal codes. And so I think that currently right now that if someone is assaulted, we have laws that allows that. And so I'm always going to be cautious. On creating more penal codes and encourage folks, is there a way, if there are situations that people can be penalized based on what we have now?
So I'm going to move on to the next question now that you know about our priorities. Uh, based upon the priorities that I spoke of, workplace safety, school nurses, Sanes and the overall nursing workforce. Uh, do you all have any additional thoughts or questions for us on the issue? Representative Nemus, I'm going to start with you this time. You're welcome, Representative.
That's fine. I want to, I, I mean, uh. I'm in close contact with you and Julie and so we talk regularly. I don't have. Many, many questions. I do want to know, I want some meat on the bones of, of the same nursing situation, um.
I'm going to share your contact.
Yep, thank you. And I, I think, um, you know, I know, I know Representative Ken Fleming has been. Our leader on, um, nursing recruitment. He's done a lot on. House Bill two hundred from a couple of years ago and is looking to see what more he can do. Um, the overall shortage is, is obviously not acceptable. And as, uh, uh, I almost said Representative Katara, sorry, as Senator Heron says. Healthcare is not going anywhere. Yes, that's true, but our professionals can. And we need to make sure that they. They want to stay here in Kentucky and that's paying. That's a lot of other things as well. Also want to note that, you know, I'm very happy that we finally passed the birthing center bill. I worked on that for a number of years. You guys have been very supportive of that. Thank you. Hopefully we can get those things up and running and give our, our citizens more options. And then, um, a couple of years ago, we, uh, we passed the bill on giving nurses immunity for, uh, medical. Mistakes that harm, uh, might harm a patient. And so we don't need those, that our nurses to be criminally responsible. And we passed. An immunity bill there. I was very happy to work on both of those issues with you guys. So. Uh, um, you know, that I've demonstrated that I'm wanting to be very close to you and support. The things that you guys care about. You're the ones on the front lines taking care of our people. And so I want to make sure that we are in Frankfurt taking care of you guys. And so that's where I am. That's where I'll always be. If I'm not, by the way, uh. A mom might not invite me to Thanksgiving and so that's, that's not going to happen. So anyways, no, just a little joke, but I, I was, obviously very much respect you all and. Want to continue to produce for you in Frankfurt.
We appreciate you, sir. Representative Bowman?
Yes, I would, I would really want to, uh, dig in on what, what's maybe your top one or two. For me personally, it would be based on our discussion tonight. The Sane Nurses and the School Nurses, uh, that would, those would be my top two picks. Uh, but re- they really learned more, um, about whi- which one or two do you guys want to see, um, pass this year? Uh, and then we, we, we get it done, right? Uh, but you know, three or four, that, that might be a little bit. A little bit more difficult, but we'll certainly try to get it all done. Uh, but those, those two are definitely the, the, the two that I would gravitate towards. I've, I've spent some time working on, uh, on the crime issue in our state and public safety. So the workplace safety stuff. Uh, is important to me as well, uh, especially given the, the number you threw out there at the beginning of the call. Uh, but I was not, I'm glad Eleanor read that question because I was not thinking of it in the way that. Uh, the question was asked on the chat about, uh, hey, do you know that this includes harassment and bullying and that type of stuff? Really wasn't thinking of it that way in my head. I was thinking of the traditional type of, yes, that, that we would think of. Um, and so, yeah, I support, I support all four priorities. I have a lot to learn on all of them. I look forward to that. So I hope that, uh. We can meet, uh, maybe a few more times, uh, between now and, and leading into session. So I can understand your priorities a little bit better and. Who knows, perhaps even, uh, even champion one of these bills for you guys.
Right. I was, I was going to put.
We have that recorded.
So what I was going to say, so I'm hearing a yes for workplace safety and you're going to champion one of our other priorities.
That's right. I would be honored to, really. I mean, like Jason said earlier, I mean, the way people think of, I mean, the way I think of nurses is like. I think of, of, of you guys as like angels, literally, like, uh, there to, to care for.
Second time this week.
Yeah, and just really, that's the way I think of it. And so I think it's going to be really difficult for, uh, my, my colleagues and, and the public at large to, to not get behind, uh, supporting your priorities. Uh, so I'd be honored to, to work with you guys and, and help support. So I'd be honored to to work with you guys and and help support you guys any way I can.
We appreciate that. Senator Heron?
Yeah, so I mean, I uh completely support um those four priorities that you have. Uh, would love to learn more about uh the workforce um issue um and figuring out how do we get more people in the pipeline of um of of healthcare, specifically nurses, um especially when we're talking about uh recruiting uh young folks of of educating them about the possibilities and the career pathways. And so uh definitely interested in learning more about that and how I can uh be a support. And then, as I said before, would love to learn more about uh all of the issues pertaining to same nurses just in general. I know that you all have something specific right now, but would love to learn more about that um in general. Um, and then I think that definitely the school nurse, I think that that's, that's a no-brainer and that that we definitely uh should make that happen in twenty twenty-six um to ensure that all of our um Kentucky kids and and students and parents have what they need um in order to um have a good learning environment.
So I'm hearing a yes for ten million dollar appropriation.
Okay, April, I have a couple of things. I I received a text from an individual from the Kentucky Hospital Association. And she wanted me to know that there was a resolution associated with HB two nineteen mandated an LRC report that contains certain data related to same. Um, and she's gonna get me some more data so that we can provide it to the legislators, so it'll help them to make good decisions as they're moving forward.
Was that Rebecca Raymer's bill last year that helped with data collection?
Yes, HB two nineteen, it sure was. And the second uh comment, and this is a question of sort, uh said Medicare cuts will remove insurance coverage for forty-seven thousand Kentuckians. Uh, I think it's more than forty-seven thousand, but we're gonna use that number for right this second, as well as rapidly disappearing rural healthcare sites. Um, the question is, how will legislators address this?
So this is um one of the two issues that uh keep me up at night. If um, you know, President George Bush used to, used to say that he asked heads of states, what keeps you up at night? And that's how he kinda learned about their thinking and and what they think is most important in their particular area. If you ask me what keeps me up at night with respect to policy, not my three teenage boys, with respect to policy, it um, it's two things. One, it's our workforce participation rate is woefully low um for working age, able-bodied people, Kentuckians. And number two, this this Medicaid question, because we have fourteen counties, or we have a hundred and twenty counties in the in the Commonwealth. Fourteen of those counties have sixty percent or more of their population utilizing Medicaid. That's not eligible for, it's using. Another forty-four counties, so a total of fifty-eight of our hundred and twenty, another forty-four counties have forty percent or more of their population utilizing Medicaid. That is not sustainable. It's way too high. I'm not throwing darts at anybody because if I were in those areas, mostly in the in the east and the southeast, if I was in those areas, I'd do what it took to put food on the table for my family as well and to get healthcare. So I'm not, I'm not making any accusations. What I'm saying is, that's not sustainable. And so when you couple those two things together, the very low workforce participation rate in Kentucky for able-bodied working age people and Medicaid, Medicaid being so out of, out of control, something has to give. And I think we can use those two issues together to improve them both. Okay, now that's easy to say. Now, the execution is very difficult. So what we've done is House and the Senate have joined together, and we've put together something called the Medicaid Oversight Advisory Board. That's can, that's chaired thankfully, in my view, by Senator Julie Rocky Adams and Representative Ken Fleming, two of the most thoughtful um well-respected legislators in Kentucky. And so this is a big issue. Uh, there's no sidestepping. It is coming right at us like a Mack truck. But we, I think, can um get through it, you know, but you know, it it's not gonna be easy, but we can get through it. I would also say that a lot of those cuts are not coming in FY one or FY two. They're coming in in spurts over, I think, about a decade. So we have some time, but we have to start acting now, and that's what we're trying to do with the Medicaid Oversight Advisory Board. But our first effort, as as this is what Congress is trying to get us to do, and it's certainly what we need to do, and this is not gonna resolve all questions, so don't, don't hear me say that. But our first effort and our strongest effort needs to be to get working age, able-bodied people off of Medicaid and into a job. That's the most important thing we can do, and that's what our effort is gonna start at.
Yeah, I mean, I I really don't have anything to add to that, guys. I was gonna point us right back toward to that uh Medicaid Oversight Board as well. And again, just seeing uh Representative Fleming's praises, Senator Julie Rocky Adams, uh, we're certainly blessed to have them leading that. And and I look forward to uh the the priorities and and the solutions that that come forward out of that committee.
Yeah, I mean, I I I think that this is a huge issue in a, in a crisis that um we don't know what's going to happen until it it happens. But I I I completely agree with um the thoughts of like, we need to figure out like what's really going on. But there, I I just want to make clear um that there has been reports from the the Kaiser Family Foundation that sixty-eight percent of those individuals who are on Medicaid are actually working individuals. And I believe that that that's broken up with like forty-six percent of that's full-time and the other twenty-two percent-ish is is part-time. And so I I think that sometimes we we think about and we talk about people being on Medicaid, that there are people who are sitting at home. Yes, there is maybe about thirty percent or twenty-eight to thirty percent of those individuals, but that, but a lot of people on these services and benefits are working individuals. I know some of those working individuals who are on Medicaid. And so I would also say that we, as a Commonwealth, we have to be clear about um all the policies and the things that we're doing. Um, and and here in Kentucky, our minimum wage is still seven dollars and twenty-five cents. So when we are talking about these issues, whether it's Medicaid or whatever, we have to talk about the whole spectrum of like what it is, because sixty-eight percent of those recipients on Medicaid, um on Medicaid are working individuals.
I think that's sixty-eight percent. I, Senator Heron, I agree with you on that issue. Most of them are working. That is a, I think, a national number. I think Kentucky's is much less than that, but what whatever the number is. We don't need to be trying to remove people off of programs if they need them. But we do need to try to give opportunities to people if uh if they don't absolutely remove them. So that's where, that's where I think we we need to go. Um, I would also note that one of the things we've been trying to work on with um with Speaker Pro Tem David Mead is to work on the benefits cliff. We don't want people to have to make the decision. If I go to work or I do more work, then I'm going to, it's gonna cost me money because I'm getting more in benefits. So we're trying to address the benefits cliff to take that that kind of perversion of a, of an option away from people and let them get back to work and gradually uh get off their benefits as they replace them with income. But um, so that, so look, Rome wasn't, Rome wasn't built in a day. We didn't get these problems in a day. We have unique uh special exacerbated problems across Kentucky that we're trying to fix. Um, we're, we've done a really good job of recruiting new business to Kentucky over the last decade, and we need to continue to do that, because, you know, the thing that is gonna lift the boats is more money, more tax dollars. And the way to get more tax dollars in is to get more jobs and more opportunity for folks. And that's what we're trying to do. This is not a standalone issue, as hardly anything is. They're all weaved together. And so we're trying to grow our way out of this problem. It's a long-term solution. I understand that, but that's what what we have to do. And so but in the meantime, if you are somebody like of my age and you can work and you're not working, you need to, you need to be off the program, and that's who we're gonna target first and then see where we go from there.
Julie, wanna take the next question?
Sure. And I'm going to take the liberty of combining six and seven because, or five and six, because they sort of relate to one another. And it's what are your personal legislative priorities? And and tying into that, do you have any healthcare-related issues that you're working on or that you might pursue? Even if it's not your bill, maybe you're still working on it with somebody else who will be carrying it. And let's start with um Senator Heron.
My cat is like all in my business right now. He does that when I get on Zoom calls. Um, that's a great question. Um, in the past, I have filed legislation. Um, he's back. For um, to to ensure that folks, um if you have um insurance, that everyone would get one mental health check. So if you think about everyone who has insurance currently can get one physical per year, um I have filed a bill that would say that you would get one mental health check. I will continue to um file that piece of legislation. Uh, juvenile justice is always gonna be a priority of mine um in some type of way. And so this year I will be again um attempting to uh get funds in for um intervention um and prevention. For those who don't know, um at the court-designated worker level or when kids are diverted uh from any type of crimes, there's no services or funds. That that is in the courts. And so we're not putting money upfront for our kids who are justice-involved. But once a kid is in in the custody of DJJ, then DJJ can contract with folks to provide services. And so I would like to see more um upfront money to help with some of our issues. Um, and then I'll, again, I'm I'm gonna file some more legislation as it relates to uh gun violence and prevention. Um, I will have a a large slate of bills. Uh, one will um be dealing with um uh uh safety um in in schools, which is probably gonna be a little bit controversial, but I hope that some of my uh conservative colleagues can get on board uh with that. Um, some things around safe storage, some things around uh keeping uh dealers um accountable. Um, and so that that piece of legislation is probably gonna be nine to ten different um provisions in it. Um, but those are gonna be the big priority. And then the other thing is I'm gonna be working with Senator Higdon um to restore uh voting rights for those with past uh felony convictions. Um, but I think in the healthcare realm, probably the mental health bill is probably um the closest thing that uh you all and or poten- or potentially the gun violence as well uh that you all may be interested in.
We would definitely like to see your piece on mental health. I think that's definitely something we could get behind if we saw the legislation. I hope I'm not speaking too soon.
It was Senate Bill seventy-four last year, I believe, but I'll get that number. It'll be the same one.
Our Kentucky Nurses Action Coalition is also very interested in work, in gun violence prevention. Uh, we applied for a grant that was uh denied. Um, so we we're we're interested from the uh Kentucky Nurses Action Coalition perspective. Representative Bowman, would you like to tell us about your priorities?
Absolutely. I would love to. Uh, so for me, the the number one priority is juvenile justice reform in twenty twenty-six. Uh, was was blessed to work with a team of legislators from Louisville in twenty twenty-four and and passed an omnibus uh criminal justice reform bill, but it left out uh juvenile justice. And we still have some pretty significant gaps in the state of Kentucky as it relates to juvenile justice. And I plan to close those next year. Um, and it it's not really um in the healthcare space, but as I'm, as I'm going through the process on this juvenile justice reform, I have uh recently learned uh just um the level at which our kids are medicated today is very concerning to me as I'm learning this. And so I plan to explore that further to understand why children today are um receiving so much medication and and really see if there's anything we knew, we need to do to protect children um from what seems to be um uh an egregious amount of of prescriptions and and medications that doctors are are prescribing. So uh it might dovetail into that, but that's gonna be my primary focus is criminal justice reform for juveniles, sorry.
Representative Nemus?
So I've got a series of things. I'll be quick. Shut me down when you need to. Um.
You can't see my finger.
I I can, I'll see your finger. As as long as the screen's on you and not Jared. I see Jared right now. It's not a good picture.
Still?
Uh, Senator Higden, on restoring voter rights, I wanna make sure that uh, you know, I'm supporting that again. I've supported that in the past. If uh if a person has served their their time, uh they need to get their civil rights back, their voting rights back, their other civil rights back as well. So I I fully support that. That would take a constitutional amendment, but I support that. Also, uh, it's the budget here. And so for me, uh, the lion's share of my time is gonna take, is gonna be taken by crafting the budget as a member of uh of House leadership. So we'll pass the, we'll pass the initial budget, and then the Senate will pass their budget, and we'll come together and we'll revise it. I want a good budget across the state, no doubt about that. I'll fight for everybody, but I'll fight for a little harder because we need, we know we are the economic engine and we need to take care of our business. And when we do that, then everybody, you know, rising tide lifts all boats, so to speak. So last time we brought in almost a billion dollars of Jefferson County, it dwarfed any previous budget that we were able to in the amount of money we were able to bring back to Louisville. I wanna, I wanna surpass that this next coming year if we possibly can. And so the budget issue is a major issue for me. I wanna su- strongly support uh Jared Bowman, uh his efforts on on the juvenile justice issue because the the, we we've done a lot. Uh, juvenile crime, juvenile violent crime in Jefferson County is down year over year, but it is up far too high in over ten years. Ten years ago, we had forty-seven murders. This year, we'll have I think the fifth year in a row of over a hundred and twenty murders. That is down. It was over a hundred and sixty for four years in a row. So that's good, but still got a long way to go. With respect to the juvenile justice, we also need to make sure that we reopen the juvenile justice facility in Louisville. Um, it was closed down by Mayor Fisher as an effort to save money for pensions. That was a very foolish decision. Craig Greenberg has been strongly supportive of putting it back on online. So have the Democrats and the Republicans in the House and the Senate. We want it to be a facility. It is designed to be a facility. It doesn't only house the most violent juveniles among us, but also because we can, we can never throw anybody away. Also, to get them the treatment they need, the programming they need, and the education they need while they're in our custody. So we're trying to grab these juveniles and get them to where they can be successful. But uh obviously, that's a very important goal, but the primary goal is to get them away from people that they can harm. And and that's the only people, by the way, that need to be in the juvenile facility. We do have some status offenders. Status offenders like kids are, they'd never, they never need to be incarcerated. So we need to change that law on that.
So I have a personal
What's that?
I have a personal question, Representative Nemus and Bowman and Heron. Um, if we wanted to consider a bill or multiple bills for appropriations, what do you think we need to do in regards to data collection to help get that bill across the line?
You gotta have, go ahead.
I'm not gonna tell you exactly what I'm talking about. I wanna speak very vaguely.
Yeah, you you have to know what you're requesting. So what we ask for is, you know, what is it, what is it for? What's the problem? What's it gonna do? How much is it gonna cost and not? You know, we understand some estimates have to be made, but we'd like it to be as narrowed down as possible. By the way, I had two other things. Can I hit them or no?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Okay, so with respect to gun violence, the mayor and the police chief tell me that that something that's colloquially known as Glock switches, which make a semi-automatic, as as I think most people know, when you pull a trigger, it bangs once. It makes a semi-automatic, like a Glock, into an automatic, where you pull the trigger, it goes, you know, it bangs a bunch of times. Those things are illegal uh in federal law, but they're not illegal in Kentucky law. And why does that matter? It matters because our law enforcement, state law enforcement, local law enforcement, and our local prosecutors can't prosecute federal violations. So twenty-two states have have outlawed it in the state level, and I'm gonna try to do that this year, therefore enabling us to to um try to get those Glock switches off our streets. Then the other thing with respect to mental health is there, we have a CARES section two oh, chapter two oh two A, which is, which enables us to protect people when they're having, I'll just say, a moment. So if it's my son, for example, I can take him to a two oh two A process, mental inquest warrant, and he might be institutionalized, but he might not be. Right now, that's the question before the judge. I wanna give the judge more options so they can have the option of institutionalization. But if they don't get to that level, which many of them don't, I want the judge to say, look, I'm not gonna institutionalize this person, but there's something short of that and something needs to be done. It might be a no-contact order with particular people. It could be no firearms. It could be that they have to go to uh substance abuse treatment, anger management, workforce training, whatever it is. And so judges, I think, need to have that extra option. And so that's another bill. The last bill I'll mention is uh, if one huge issue we have in Kentucky is housing, affordable housing. Now, that means a lot of things to a lot of people, and I want housing for everybody. But my main focus is housing for woke, working folk. So if you're a nurse, or if you're a mechanic, or you're a teacher, if you're young, you're priced out of the market in housing in many places. And those people are the people who make America work, and we need to get them in a situation where they can um buy houses. So that's what we're trying to do. And Representative Witten, who's probably the best representative in Kentucky, she's leading the effort on housing, and I'll be fully supportive of that effort.
Thank you. Well, that was a lot. You did an incredible job. Thank you so much for being with us. Um, any closing remarks, Julie?
I will be talking with all of you about these issues as time comes. And then um, as you will be hearing also from other nurses, uh maybe some of the people who are on this tonight, as well as others who couldn't make it. But we appreciate so much your support and your willingness to do this, but to listen and to
But we appreciate so much your support and your willingness to do this, but to listen and to participate and talk with us. You may not always agree with us, and we understand that. We would really like for you to, cuz we think we're on the right side, but that's a whole nother issue. But we, we understand that in your heart of hearts, you're with us. And so that means an awful lot to all of us. And I appreciate working with you guys. You always have an open door. Um, I tell, I'll I'll make comments to to individual nurses or to Delano, and I'll go, oh, I really like them. They're really nice. Yeah, I really do like you guys. You all are really nice. Now, some people who could have been on here, maybe not so much, but you guys, I really do like. So, thank you so much.
Thanks, Julie. April, closing remarks?
Yes, ma'am. I would just like to echo a big thank you all for coming tonight, taking the time out of your busy schedule to join us. We look forward to more dialogue, more conversations with you all, and just creative ideas of how we can not only preserve, but in my opinion, the best profession in the world, but to ensure that Kentuckians are very well cared for. Again, thank you all so much for coming. Our next legislative town hall for the members will be next Tuesday from six thirty to eight as well.
Well, that's kinda tentative at this point. So um, well, we're, that's why I want you and and Julie to stay with me.
Absolutely.
We are planning and hoping to be able to do it.
Thank you.
We do have uh another town hall on the twenty-third, and that'll be with uh the Nightingale Chapter in Penny Row. And on the thirtieth of September, northeastern, southeastern, and western. We have our gala, which is November the thirteenth, and we invite all of you, the legislators and all of the attendees, to join us. Uh, it will be at the Olmstead on November the thirteenth, and we will be giving out our awards uh for our Nurse of the Year, Researcher of the Year, all of the of the year awards. And then on the fourteenth, we'll have our annual conference. I'm not sure. I didn't see all of your name. I know that Jason Nemus is on the Nurse Legislator Engagement Program, because I'm his nurse. Do both of you have a nurse that is a liaison with our Nurse Legislator Engagement Program? Do you have a sign? Well, I'll get you hooked up. Don't worry. Right after this, right after this session, I will speak with Dolores White, who is our um coordinator of that program, so that you'll have a nurse that will be a person that you can call upon and ask a question in the middle of the night, when you wake up and say, oh, what about? Yeah, that's the person you should call.
I have to tell you too, Delano, I know we give Jason a little bit of trouble sometimes, but I have never seen him as happy as the day he got to show me that award he was given by your organization.
It's the prettiest award given any organization gives out, no doubt.
I've never seen him so happy. It was, it was really cool.
Well, he had a lot of competition. But he won far ahead of all the competition.
That's right.
So we were very proud to be able to award him that uh that statue. Thank you. So we will get you all hooked up with a nurse, so that you'll have a nurse liaison. And again, we thank you for your time. We thank you for your commitment to the nursing profession, and we'll see you around.